Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne.
Here.
And Trustee Takaoka gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Okay. All right, we have a call. Can everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance. Okay. There is a motion to appoint Trustee Cook President Pro Tem.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be President Pro Tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
I just want to let you know I'm having a hard time hearing everything.
There is a motion and a second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, next item is citizens wishing to address the board. Is there anyone here wants to address the board on something that's not on the meeting? Okay, all right, then, under official reports, the first official report is Assistant Village Manager, correct?
Yes, sir.
Certification of the Village Emergency Operation Plan.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Tonight, staff will present the Emergency Operations Plan that will be in effect until June 2026, along with information on our preparation and planning for response to incidents that could go beyond the resources of the village. An emergency operation plan relies on the concept that response to a disaster will always be at the lowest possible level, and all departments within the village will be utilized during disaster operations to address the emergency. If village resources are inadequate, additional assistance can be requested from the county or state to return the village to pre-disaster conditions. In December of 2021, the village was advised by staff from Lake County Emergency Management that the Illinois Emergency Management Agency developed and implemented new plan guidelines that must be adhered to. One of the requirements of the new guidelines is to have the EOP reviewed and approved by an external authority. For Vernon Hills, that authority is the Lake County Emergency Management Agency. One may ask why this review and approval is required. Emergency response planners must take into consideration how many stakeholders they could potentially be called upon to serve, and when one thinks of how many municipalities exist within a county and how many counties exist within a state, the first time a larger unit of government is called upon to provide resources should not be the first time persons from the larger unit of government become aware of the smaller unit of government's key contacts, needs, service population, and potential requests. And when we think about emergency management and attempts to get out of crisis phase, established working relationships should already exist with those tasked with emergency response. Over the last year, members from each department had opportunity to review the Village Emergency Operations Plan and offer suggested edits and changes. And during this period, staff from Lake County Emergency Management had opportunity to review our plan and make recommendations and suggested revisions as well. The Village Emergency Operations Plan will help to ensure the protection of life, property, and the environment. The Village EOP will ensure sound policy to include identifying roles and responsibilities during an emergency and foster the development and maintenance of relationships with agencies and personnel from jurisdictions who will be responsible for the response to critical incidents within Vernon Hills. As mentioned, IEMA developed plan guidelines that must be adhered to, including the requirement for each municipality to submit their plan for external review. External review ensures key concepts of the plan are understood by all stakeholders and will be adhered to in an actual emergency. The key concepts of this plan include ensuring continuity of government during a disaster or crisis, identification of chain of command, steps for official activation of the plan, which include the village president signing an executive order, means for requesting additional assistance, provisions for updating the plan, provisions for exercising the plan, jurisdictional maps, vulnerabilities, staging areas for responders and equipment, shelter locations, resource directories, the fire department disaster agreement, and NIMS definitions. The village plan was formally reviewed by department heads and key staff over multiple dates during the first quarter of 2024 and reviewed by members of the Vernon Hills Police Department's Command Staff during the spring of 2024. In addition, our fire protection district partners have each had opportunity to review the plan. The village submitted this EOP to Lake County EMA with the plan being approved and certified on June 20, 2024. We would like to take this opportunity to thank Lake County Emergency Management for their support, including Emergency Management Specialist Bree Kingshot, who guided and led Vernon Hills through the review and certification process. We are pleased to present this plan to the village board tonight. After this presentation with the signature of the mayor, this plan is formally authenticated. At this time, we would like to invite Bree Kingshot, Emergency Management Specialist, to the podium for comment. Bree?
Good evening, everyone. As I said, my name is Bree Kingshot. I'm the Emergency Response Specialist with Lake County EMA, and I work closely with John Petriello on your Emergency Operations Plan. An Emergency Operations Plan is a key component of an emergency management program. It establishes your overall authorities, roles, and functions during an incident. It's a way of mapping out your best course of action during an emergency and also provides the structure and the process the organization utilizes to respond and recover from an incident. To complete an EOP, an Emergency Operations Plan, it takes a lot of time, and it involves an extensive amount of coordination. For us in Lake County EMA, over the last few years, we have responded to numerous large incidents: a pandemic, a mass shooting, flooding, and tornadoes, and numerous other events. We often say success is in our partnerships and in our plans, planning on our blue-sky days ahead of any incident that takes place. I want to applaud Vernon Hills for creating a strong plan for those potential incidents and for helping to build a local resiliency. This plan is a great way to communicate to your residents and guests that you've taken the time to create this plan and are taking efforts to be prepared at this local level. I want to formally thank John Petriello, who spent a lot of time and effort putting this plan together, as well as all of the partners that were involved in this process. It's truly a team effort. From myself and my LCMA team, the county, and the county administrator, I want to say congratulations on completing your plan. We truly appreciate your partnership and support. Thanks.
Thank you. Jen, next step on this, or is it?
So there's a document that the mayor signs that authenticates it, and I've sent it to Bree already. So the county has certified the plan. You see the certificate up there that we've received, I believe, from Dan Eater, the manager of Lake County Emergency Management, saying that we are certified and good to go. So the next review process will begin in about 18 months, with a submission required in around June, probably about April or May of 2026.
And the only official action you need from board level is the mayor's signature, right?
It is, and we just review with the board each, every two years, that this is something that we do, staff does, and is required that we have to bring it before the mayor.
Okay, good. Thank you. I know this took a lot of hard work, Chief, and the other people from staff involved. You know, thank you for everything you put into this.
Absolutely. Thanks for recognizing the other stakeholders. So, you know, obviously, village staff's not going to be the one responding, you know, to the critical incident. It's everybody from the police department to our fire departments. And we should also mention Public Works, who are also first responders. If you think about floods or, you know, other disasters like that, they'll be out there as well. So as you saw in some of the pictures, you know, the first thing that we do is we share the plan with staff. We look for anything that has changed, you know, as buildings come, buildings go. You know, I shared with Kevin, there was a time that there was farmfields south, south of Dunkin' Donuts, and then American Hotel Register came, and now it's gone. And so obviously, the jurisdictional maps have to change and some of the hazards that were there before. So things do change, even in a town like Vernon Hills. So the next step is, once we've identified some of the documents that need to be updated, like maps and hazards, we bring the police department and Public Works in to each exercise the plan to see what changes, and the police department assigns it to one of their key command staff members. When it comes back, the edits are made. And then I think you saw a picture of the command staff testing the plan, and once we're comfortable with it, it is then pushed out to our fire districts. So we're one of those unique communities that has two districts, so we have to get input from both CFD and Lincolnshire River Woods, and they were obviously great. Annex is attached. And then from there, one more run is taken before we send it to the county, and then the county has a new document, I believe it's called at the PDF, where I think a couple of the trustees saw my office, I believe Trustee Schenk was one that came in one day and just saw millions of pieces of paper everywhere where there's certain criteria that we're trying to match with keywords within the plan, just to show that we made the document, that we completed all steps of the document. Once we're able to certify where every task is identified in the plan, we send that document along with the plan to the county, and then the county gives comment, sends it back to us, and give a final thank you to our admins, who have to go through and update the plan for us, and then once that's done, we give it to the county, and then finally, the county certifies it. So it was a process that probably took seven, seven to eight months from the time we got the green light to go till today. And again, thank you to Bree. You made it, wouldn't say easy, but you made it clear, so thank you. Thank you.
Any comments from the, from the board regarding this? Okay, all right. Nobody else on staff has a speaking part this evening, correct? Okay, then next item would be omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through O?
No, we do have a report from the treasurer.
Oh, we do have.
Sorry, sir, I do have.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, no worries.
Usually when it says enclosed in the packet, you don't say anything, so I apologize.
Right. So the investment balance report is enclosed in the packet for your review. But I did want to take a couple minutes and just cover a few slides of the fiscal '24 quarterly report and review the financial data of the year, ended April 30, 2024. So enclosed in the packet is also the full report, but I'm just going to make this brief and cover some highlights here for everyone. I'm going to start with the budget versus actual information, and all these numbers reported here are officially unaudited, as we're still working with the audit team to finalize the audit report, but I would expect the numbers to be as I'm presenting them now in the audit report. So taking a look at budget versus actual for fiscal year '24, specifically the general fund, actual revenues and sources finished the year at $36.9 million. This is under budget, $1.7 million. To break that down a little bit, I have been talking about sales tax coming off their peak and slowing a bit. The 1% municipal sales tax revenue finished the year under budget by about $2 million, so this is an 8.2% drop. To add some context to this, though, fiscal year '23 was the all-time peak in sales tax revenue. Also, the sales tax in the prior two years leading up to fiscal '24 had increased 27% and 9%, so we'd had kind of a blip there on the upside. This recent decline could be viewed as sales tax revenues moving back in line with the longer-term growth trajectory, which is around 3% per year. There is a new feature I included in the full report that breaks down the sales tax revenue by retail center, so I encourage the board to take a look at the report when they have time. Another revenue of note, the construction permit revenue finished the year under budget by $1.1 million. And again, just as larger projects come and go, they, sometimes they take longer than anticipated. Some of the larger anticipated projects have either been delayed or moved into future years, or they've been scrapped. Some of these are projects, just to name a few, Doms Market, Hawthorne Tenant Buildouts, and Urban Air. On the flip side, the grant revenue finished over budget by a couple hundred thousand dollars. This is credit to the police department, as they've done a good job seeking out grants to fund ALPR cameras, body worn cameras, operations to mitigate organized retail crime, among others. The last revenue I'd like to note is interest income. This finished the year over budget, $1.1 million. And again, the higher interest rates stuck around throughout the year, providing the additional income over the initial expectations. Looking at expenditures of the general fund, expenditures and other uses finished the year at $31.3 million. This is under budget, $2.3 million. Half of this budget savings was due to less economic incentives paid out during the year. So as these economic incentives follow sales tax revenues, if the sales tax revenues are down, we're paying less of this out. The other half was due to lower personnel and contractual service expenditures. Personnel costs finished up 2.9% from the prior year, but did finish under budget by approximately $350,000. So actual increase was under the inflation for the year, under the inflation rate for the year. The actual increase in fund balance then in the general fund finished the year at $5.5 million, which was above budget. Moving down to village-wide, actual revenues, village-wide in sources finished the year at $52.6 million, pretty much on par with budget here. Actual expenditures and other uses finished the year at $44.4 million, under budget by $4.1 million. So in addition to the items I already outlined in the general fund, the capital fund expenditures finished the year under budget by $1.1 million. This is mostly related to various stormwater improvements and a $400,000 contribution to the Park District for the Splash Park that did not occur in fiscal '24. Subsequently, we did pay the Park District a $400,000 contribution in fiscal '25, though. Also, due to continued time lags with vehicle purchase, the replacement fund underspent its budget by about $500,000. We continue to see several month lag, and when we order vehicles, especially larger trucks, we're over the year mark still on getting some of those in, so. And then the actual fund balance and net position increase for all village funds increased $8.2 million, which is over budget by $4.4 million. And last item of note there, the general fund expenditures increased at a slower rate than inflation, just to give some perspective here, 2.6% increase in general fund expenditures versus inflation of 3.4%. So it's always a target to stay at or around the inflation mark. Moving on to look at some balance here, cash and investment and fund balances. So cash and investments increased $10.6 million over the year. Half of this is due to the net activity in the three TIF funds, and then the remainder is due to activity in the general fund. The general fund fund balance, taking a look here at our coverage ratio, fund balances as a percent of expenditures. So the actual finish of the year fiscal '24, the fund balance was $48.3 million. That has coverage of our expenditures of 162%, and this is over what we had initially planned during the budget of 149%. Again, here's a few bullets just showing some takeaways. I'm not going to read one by one, but, you know, in summary, we had another solid year here financially speaking. The village continues to maintain its strong financial position. Over the past few years, the general fund has generated significant surpluses. Now that COVID relief funding is behind us, and we're coming off the highest sales tax revenue in village history, in the coming years, we anticipate these surpluses to be substantially less than we have experienced over the last few years, at least in the near term. That concludes my prepared comments, but happy to take any questions.
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
So, thank you. Just to point this out, our total general fund revenue was down about $4 million than last year, not budget-wise, approximately, I think, but the general fund itself increased... What was the total it increased here? Like $6 million or something like that, $6.6 million? Or five and a half million?
5.5.
5.5. So I think we want to make sure, we highlight this because we are operating responsibly. I commend this board and staff when we went over to in-house finance director because there's more ownership on it, and I think the, it's not something that's small, that's a big thing. When you're down in tax revenue, but your general fund is growing, that is a very good thing. So I applaud you guys for doing that. That's good work in your department, Tom.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Thanks. I appreciated the breakdown into, by retail centers. I was wondering if you could get us older data, specifically for the mall. I'm curious where things were at its peak. All the data we have is post-COVID, so I'm curious.
Unfortunately, the state keeps, is, provides availability of three years of data. So when I first came in, that was one of my requests to reach out to the state to see what I could uncover so I could provide some trend information, and unfortunately, I don't have that. And so what I did at that point is start to collect what I could from there on, so we're going to have information going forward and longer trend data. So as we move from year to year, we'll have more trend data to, obviously, review and understand where we're going and where we were, but I can't get data further beyond that, 2021.
Could we make a special request to the state? Could they dig it? I mean, they've got to have the data.
And/or maybe Melanomy might, or...
I can check into it. I don't know if they retain that after a certain, after a certain, but I can definitely reach out to the state to see if there's any other manner of obtaining this data, FOIA or any other process.
And I'm just wondering, along that, because of all the back studies they've done with us, if Melanomy might have some of that information.
The Melanomy report is generated using the aggregate data, so the data that Tom uses to create this report is specific retailers, so Melanomy wouldn't have that information for Vernon Hills. Yeah, that's held kind of close to the vest, to get that by retailer information, since it is pretty sensitive data. Maybe that's why they have policies to not maintain that over three years. But in aggregate, yes, we can look at different things, but we can't break it down by retail center or even industry. I have tried.
Okay. And for these retail centers...
You know, can I make the...
No, go ahead, Roger.
Can I make the difference?
Yeah, go ahead.
Trustee Oppenheim, you want to fill, do you have the floor?
No, go ahead.
No, I just want to, I mean, we must have a record, though, of what kind of sales tax was generated from the mall. You want to go back five years, 10 years ago, we must have something. Because we used to establish, and we had to share with insurance companies, what we wanted to insure in case we had a fire, because we had sales tax insurance coverage. You know, we might still have it, so I, you know, if certain areas, you know, certain retail centers burned down or something, that could drastically, that could dramatically still affect us. So there's got to be some record in Village Hall. But it's, you know, digging back, to get the current stuff, yeah, that's another issue, which I'm sure the mall isn't doing too great.
Yeah.
But there's got to be some record. Because we were ensuring, like, you know, CBW and stuff like, you know?
Yes.
It was report, you know, major sales tax generating businesses.
Yep, I am familiar with that policy, and there is possibly partial data for those businesses, but as far as the whole picture to give trend data on the retail centers may be more challenging. I'm continually finding things in the files, both digital and paper, as longer I'm here, so I will absolutely see what I can find, and I'll even reach out to the state in addition to see if there's any other way we can obtain those.
You know what?
Yeah, or if they destroy them.
Yeah, okay, well, well, let's do some digging into it.
How valid will the data be, given that all the square footage they've decreased of retail and made residential over, I mean, is it going to be valid data? I mean, would we lose Sears, Carson's? There's some significant retail that dropped out of there, and they have yet to, they haven't really gone up and running yet.
Well, that's what I think they want to look at.
Yeah, I mean, it's still valid to the extent that we recognize that there's been a conversion, but at least, at least we know.
Performance against what it was, right?
Yeah, to see at its peak, how much was the mall generating, and, you know, where we are now.
I mean, even, even the aggregate sales tax data does give us some information to that, if we look at those decades-long, you know, where our whole revenue might be eight, nine million 15 years ago, and now it's, you know, 17 million, so there's some significant... Yeah, I'll see what else I can find on that.
Yeah, that's very helpful. It'd just be, be good to see if we, what we can find pre-COVID.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the board? Okay, anything else on that question line?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, now we go to omnibus, right? Okay. Okay, so next would be omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through O? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. No unfinished business, correct? And then under new business, approval and passage of ordinance 2024-109 and ordinance amending ordinance 2023-096 relating to the exterior appearance of Ace Pickleball, 555 Townline Road, Unit 100. Director Jennings.
Thank you. As you recall, the special use permit for the indoor pickleball facility at 555 Townline Road, Unit 100, was amended in March of this year to replace the operator. This had been originally approved as Pickle Mall, and Ace Pickleball took over the special use permit when Pickle Mall elected not to expand into this region. At the time, the property owner handled the special use amendment on the tenant's behalf. They had a somewhat generic appearance elevation that was included in their approval package. Since that time, they've been working with the tenant, and the tenant does have a more brand-specific appearance that they are requesting. As you can see here, it's got brand-specific colors. The shopping center as a whole has been refreshed with the more gray tones, gray and white, different shades in the same family, and so the proposal here is to complement what has been done at Harbor Freight, but then have a entry feature that's specific to the brand image for Ace Pickleball. So neither the landlord or the business was able to make it tonight, but we did keep it on the agenda. If there are questions that I can't answer, we can always table this to a different date.
Okay. Comments or questions?
When's our proposed opening date if all goes through?
I don't have a specific date from them yet. I'll ask. There's a split permit. The landlord's doing some of the work, the tenant's doing some of the work, so I can, between the two of them, I can try to get you an estimate by the next meeting. It's not a significant amount of work on the inside. It's a floor finish and some lighting, so I don't think it's going to take very long.
This is obviously a computerized rendering here on the right.
Yeah, that part, yeah.
So the, because there's rooftop units there that look like they're gone. I presume those will still be there.
They are still there, yes.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
It would be a very colorful corner.
Yeah.
With Harbor Freight.
Looks good.
Yeah. All right, then is there a motion to approve passage of ordinance 2024-109?
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion of second. Any other... Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call please.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, any communications that the board has to? The one thing I would say is that please note, and Chief, you can help me with this, the high school's already back in session, the elementaries go back Monday. So, I mean, people that are out there driving now, when you see a crossing guard out there or you see children out there, slow down, pay attention to what's going on. We, we, you know, we don't want to have any serious accidents and stuff again. When, the other thing is when your school first starts up, not everybody's used to the procedures again, so. Chief, anything you'd like to add?
No, I echo your comments exactly. I, I would remind everyone that next week, when, when school comes back, traffic increases too. So build, you know, you probably take a lot of stress off your life just building an extra five minutes into your morning commute. Will probably make a difference of feeling anxious or not as you're driving. Be a little more in the moment. You're absolutely right, the crossing guards have a really tough duty and a tough job out there. Our bus drivers, they're getting to know the routes many times, they're going to be operating slower and it, it matters and, and we need people to pay attention. So thanks for bringing it up.
Any other communications from the board? Okay, and if not, is there a motion to adjourn the board and go to committee of the whole?
So I'm in.
Second.
A motion of second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Okay, I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting order. Is there a motion to appoint trustee Cook, president Pro Tem?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be president Pro Tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion of second, roll call?
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, first item tonight is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of July 9th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion of second, any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye, motion carries. A second item, discussion of conversion of building and use conversion procedures. Director Jennings?
Thank you. I had alluded to this presentation a couple of meetings ago. We had a conversion certificate proposed. We postponed it from that meeting to not have an actual conversion certificate request and a discussion of the program in general on the same night. So as promised, we have prepared a memo for your packet that goes through the background of the program, reviews the rationale for possibly amending the program, and then describes some alternatives for, for potential amendments. So I'm going to go through some of this somewhat quickly. It repeats some of the items that we discussed during the Planet Fitness conversion certificate request. So some of this background information is, is directly from those slides. This, the program, the conversion certificate program was established in 2010 as a, as a method of protecting sales tax generating space within the village. It was paired at the time with the core retail overlay district, which is a, an overlay added to the zoning map and specifically required the conversion certificate review in locations within that overlay district. The certificate, just generally speaking, is required when a, a particular property is going to go over 20% non-retail. So that's simplifying it a bit, but whether it's a single unit of a larger size or in aggregate, once that threshold of 20% is kept, the next space requires that conversion certificate to be, to be approved. The, the review standards here, you see here, the, the conversion will not have a detrimental impact on the physical health of the village. The conversion will strengthen the viability of adjacent properties. Without the conversion, the property cannot yield a reasonable return. And then the conversion is the minimum amount of space necessary to accomplish the, the goals. The, in, in each conversion certificate request, the board has the, the ability to approve the request, deny the request, and then there's a couple of options for conditional approval. There's a approval with a payment in lieu of taxes. There's also a deferred approval option that requires the applicant to market the space for an additional year prior to occupying it with the non-retail use. The map you see here is the locations of all of the previously approved conversion certificates. We have, I believe, four actively in operation, three that are in some, that are somewhat pending. They're either under construction or they have a zoning entitlement process. That'd be the case for Roots Dance Studio at the mall. So there are two on that list, sorry, three on that list that are not operating at all, two that will not, that have, that the, the business did not end up pursuing permits. So just briefly then, the, the rationale for modifying the program, the, the landscape has changed. The retail market has changed. The total square footage of retail within the village has increased since this program was established in 2010. Online shopping has changed how different retailers utilize physical space. There's a significant decrease in the demand for these larger units. So a lot of the units that we're seeing are big box stores, the, they're having difficulty renting them anyway and having this conversion certificate is an additional hurdle for the landlord to, to work with. So part of the rationale then is that it adds some predictability to the landlords in marketing space. The program as it's written doesn't have any consideration for unique factors like long-term vacancy of a unit. Doesn't factor in particular businesses that have higher productivity per square foot, like a restaurant. And then one of the issues that we had actually asked the village attorney to review is the, the conditional approvals and how difficult it would be to actually implement one of those conditional approvals. None of the approvals that have been done so far were conditional. They didn't require either the deferred approval or the payment in lieu of taxes. So we had actually asked the village attorney to review the program and if you could just kind of give a brief overview.
Certainly, I, I want to start by saying that the program itself, the idea of having a retail overlay zoning district is a valid action of the zoning authority. It's within your discretion to protect sales tax within your community. So having the program in and of itself is not violated of, of the law. The concern is with some aspects of the program and we have to be very careful when we have a program like this, have standards to apply. And one of the biggest concerns we have in reviewing this is the alternative to require what's referred to as a pilot agreement, payment in lieu of taxes agreement. One of the elements Andrew was talking about is you could decide to issue a certificate of building use conversion if, and also require the property owner to, to enter into this pilot agreement. That requires a determination of what the sales tax average is per square foot. You, you determine what a building of that size would generate in sales tax. And over the course of five years, the property owner or tenant would pay in the first year 100% of the sales tax, second year 80, third year 60, 40, and then 20%. The concern with that particular part of the program is there are no standards under which you decide to make that a requirement. It's simply left to your discretion. And in reviewing this program, it's our concern that it's, it's very arbitrary and it would not withstand judicial scrutiny if you were to require a payment in lieu of sales tax. We haven't done that to date. I've seen several of these over the last five, six years since I've been here and we have never required a pilot agreement. It's going to be interesting the first time we do and why we do it. So i- if Andrew lays out a couple of alternatives, one is to eliminate the pilot program altogether. You, you could certainly keep a version of this if you wanted to. Eliminate the requirement for a pilot agreement or create some standards under which we might consider a pilot agreement to be appropriate. That is the biggest concern I had with the program. It's that element where you could, with one of these requests, decide a pilot agreement's appropriate when you haven't done so for these, for the others. And that would lead to an arbitrary, potentially arbitrary decision.
So what I, what I end the memo with, just for the purposes of the discussion with the committee, is alternatives that sort of run the spectrum of least amount of change to the existing section of the zoning code to the most significant. So the least significant, as, as the village attorney is, as just referred to, would be a, a small amendment targeted to addressing the conditional approval on the pilot program, having standards added to the code so that there's a clear, clear criteria for when this is going to be a, a condition of approval of a certificate. So that's the smallest amount of change. The, the next would be to add on to that, increasing flexibility for the mall, acknowledging the, the plan for renovations to the mall is for a lifestyle center type mix of uses as was discussed at the last two certificates for the mall. The third one would be a more significant overhaul. That would be trying to figure out some way to weight different uses, for example, give a greater weight to a, a restaurant. It has a higher productivity per square foot and, and get off of the 20% flat and figure out a way to, to do a little more nuanced calculation, allowing administrative approval for vacant units over a certain number of years, that sort of thing. So just a, a more significant set of modifications than, and then the, the final one would be the, the retail, the conditions that required this program to be established in the first place have changed so much that perhaps the committee would want to just eliminate it. So that's the, the range of the four potential options. The reason that we're trying to get some feedback is this does require a, a hearing with the planning and zoning commission. However, it's not, it's not really within their purview at all. They don't review these certificates. It does go to the committee and then the board. So I, I think having the, the planning and zoning commission review this just out of the blue would, would be really too difficult for them. So having some type of direction, if that hearing is going to be held, I think would be necessary.
Well, I, just to start, I, I'd still like to have some, you know, board control over uses that come in. I mean, the, would we, you know, where would we still have on that? And because the thing is, you're correct, mixed use in the last, just the last decade. I mean, this is a 14-year-old system. Within the last decade, all you have to do is look around the Chicago metropolitan area and you'll see that the, the whole retail landscape has changed, that mixed use and, and entertainment specialties and that kind of thing are now a significant part of any retail base. So that makes some of this almost, you know, archaic in a way. So I can see us changing it. I would, you know, especially like eliminating the, the way the pilot works with that. But I would like to see us keep a little bit of control. Trustee Oppenheimer?
So I'm curious, I don't really remember discussion of the pilot program when some of these other ones came up. Did we talk about that even as a possibility of asking for, for money in lieu of?
If we've never asked.
The taxes?
Yeah, I, I think it's been laid out in materials that community development has provided to you. I mean, the, the statute, statute of the ordinance has been laid out and it's part of the ordinance.
Saying that, that, that pilot was an option, but we chose not to. I, I just don't remember.
It hasn't really come up in detail, but I, I'm pretty sure I saw it in memorandums that have, or at least dockets that have come before the board.
But I don't recall ever.
Having a discussion.
Yeah. Yeah.
If it wasn't recommended to utilize the pilot program, we probably didn't talk about it. To Jim's point, I mean, it might have been in a 15-page summary.
Yeah, I think it would come up if the board was leaning toward a no and then the pilot would come up as an alternative to the no. So, okay, we're not really in favor of this, but we have this option to do the pilot and that'll.
And since we never flatly said no on anything, the pilot never?
Pretty much always said yes from what we could find.
That would make sense.
But, but the concern still remains. The, the decision to use the pilot program, it, the way this is written, it's purely discretionary for this committee, for the, to, to decide and for the board to decide. And when you start to treat similarly situated applicants differently is when you run into constitutional issues with the zoning code.
Exactly, yes.
By definition. So that, that is the concern with the way it's written.
And do we have any sense as to, other than us not saying flat out no, why, why, why wasn't it brought up as, as a, an option or to, to get extra revenue? Because I agree, it's certainly arbitrary, but it's more arbitrary at, at the, the staff level as opposed to our level. It wasn't really brought up to us to the extent that, that we were fully aware is my, is my feeling. So are you following my, my?
Yeah, I, I think I am. I mean, that the pilot has existed as an option since the, since 2010.
14 years.
I, I think your question is, in, in past presentations of the certificate, that option maybe wasn't as clear that that was available.
Right. So now that, now that we're aware of it and we would potentially use it, then it becomes a purely arbitrary decision because we've never done it before. So we're even at greater risk now, just, we're fully understanding that, that that would potentially be an option and, and we have no real criteria to decide.
Yeah.
Okay, this is in the retail zone, we can potentially ask them for additional revenue to, to make up for the lost taxes for that space and, but we want something to go in there. We have no idea how to.
Right. Another challenge we have is some of the recent certificates have been in, in spaces. So two, for example, in the mall are spaces right below the AMC that the date have never had a tenant.
Right.
So they never produced any sales tax. Another one was with the Planet Fitness that was vacant for over 10 years.
For 10 years, right.
And so, and, and actually in the ordinance in the village code, it references a Land Institute policy manual to come up with that sales per square foot. In preparation for the meeting, I looked up that, that publication. It was published in June of 2008 and you can't even get a copy of it anymore. So, you know, to even come up with what would the sales, what would the pilot be based on, you know, we'd have to come up with a mechanism for that as well.
Well, that's, that's part of the fact that the, that the landscape is so completely different now than it was 15, 16 years ago. We have so much more retail, but I would still like to have at least a little bit of control over use and stuff because, I mean, at what point does it, you know?
So I guess the problem is control over use is what might potentially get us into trouble in terms of being arbitrary about?
Yeah.
About what uses we like and, and don't like, as opposed to just asking for the pilot aspect of it.
I, I would say in response to that, there are standards for issuing a building use conversion. There's four standards that Andrew laid out in one of the slides. They come right from the ordinance.
Can you go back to that slide, Andrew?
There's also on page three of your handout, this is directly from the village code.
If you see here on the slide, certificate of building use conversion review standards and actions. And these four standards are looked at theoretically by the board when you decide to issue one of these certificates and you make, we make findings when the ordinance is ultimately written that these standards have been met, much like a special use, different standards, but same, same concept. This isn't. This isn't so arbitrary. There are standards that we, we are looking at versus the pilot agreement, which really has no standards attached to it whatsoever.
So are you suggesting that we keep what's here on this slide with the exception of the pilot?
I, I would say if, if the Certificate of Building Use Conversion ordinance is going to remain, these standards should definitely remain. These standards go to whether or not you're gonna issue a certificate.
But eliminate the pilot.
The pilot is not part of the standards. It's a different section. I would say keep the standards and eliminate the pilot agreement, or we work on the pilot agreement section, as Andrew laid out, to create some criteria if, if we, if we even can do it.
Can you give us some thoughts or examples of when you could first see us using a pilot program? Because most of these things come up, space has been empty, or we feel like it's not gonna be filled. When, when would we potentially use a pilot program?
Yeah, that first standard, so the first standard that, that's on the screen right now is the conversion will not have a detrimental impact. So there's two options within that. That's either they make it up through the pilot or they present some sort of argument that says we're gonna increase traffic to the other businesses, and therefore it's gonna not have a detrimental impact. So every single one of these so far has gone with that option, and the board has accepted their argument that they operate in such a way that they're going to bring people to the other businesses, and therefore this particular unit's loss of revenue doesn't matter. They're, they're making up for it in some way. So the idea, as, as the memo from the attorney had suggested, is come up with some standards for that then. Whether it's, you know, through providing some sort of analysis that they actually show what other types of revenue. Maybe they have an entertainment aspect to it that provides revenue in some other fashion, so the sales tax isn't, isn't, isn't the issue. So I, I think we could look around and try to find some, if, if the committee's desire is to have standards attached to it, we could come up with something. I don't know of any other program like this, so I don't think we can borrow it. I think we'd be, we'd be coming up with those standards on our own, but we could certainly put some work into it.
Are you aware of other nearby municipalities having a pilot program and/or using a pilot program?
I am not. I, I have not seen that in my practice.
Do we know where it came up, where it came from?
This was Rolf Campbell. This was a zoning consultant back in 2010. So they, they came up with the, the idea.
You know, I can, as you talk about when you would use a pilot program, Tom, I'm gonna draw from your report. Your, our top five sales tax businesses in town generated about almost $10 million of the 17, eight, right? So I would say if one of those businesses were to sell and sell to say something that's non-retail or non-sales tax generating revenue, that could be considered a detriment, but we would have to lay that out very clearly. And in fact, if we get rid of the pilot program, which I think I'm in favor of, and we, but we wanted to protect ourselves in that, I think we would have to rewrite something, redo something completely different because we can't go back in time, because that's where our, our liability is, right? The past businesses that we said yes to, go ahead and do whatever you want. We're not even gonna talk about a pilot program. And now suddenly we're gonna put a pilot program on somebody that might affect a $2 million sales tax revenue loss? So that's where our problem is. So I think we keep the Certificate of Building Use Conversion. Can we change the, the standards a little bit, or is that a governmental regulated standard?
No, we could, we could.
We, we can increase it a little bit, just to have a little bit more oversight, right? Because we won't have the pilot program to use.
Right.
And then if we need, and then we can have consideration for if we, if, if we get down that road where we start catching wind that, hey, so-and-so might be moving out and selling to a non-retail, we need to protect ourselves. Because we don't levy property tax, we know that. And we don't levy an entertainment ta, or we don't have an entertainment tax, which who knows what comes down the road? And we're losing our grocery tax in next year, right? So we do have to protect ourselves. I think we should, my opinion is to have a few more standards that you can, I think you can help come up with standards that can help protect us a little bit more there on that front. Keep the C, the certificate building. Eliminate the pilot program because it's irrelevant at this point. It's just gonna be a liability for us. And then rebuild it as something else possibly, but make sure that we address it each time we have a building use. That's just my opinion.
We've had some extreme situations. Planet Fitness, that building was vacant for 10 years. I mean, so I mean, you didn't even think about a pilot program. It was, you, you had a user there that was gonna draw. I think Milanofe's study said, draw patrons to that center, and everybody was in favor of it. So it, it, it makes sense in a lot of situations to, to move forward with a non-sales tax generator. But I, I agree, we can maybe tighten up these standards a bit to assist. But applying the pilot program moving forward will be difficult to do.
Trustee Markworth?
You know, one of the things when it impacts the village, as Andrew mentioned, more, more traffic flow, lights. Well, do you look at the point where it's not a tax, but we need an additional police vehicle or additional police? Is that something? Because some of the cases, that's the last four, if it's residential, for additional fire truck for the...
You're talking like similar to an impact fee.
Yeah, exactly.
Can that be something that we consider? Because it's burning us on our sex, uh, sales tax revenue. But it, we can get it from another source, meaning for the fact that they'll pay for police vehicles or personnel.
You're talking about an impact fee to be paid by a retailer?
Correct. If they're, if we have someone coming into this building...
Which is essentially a pilot program.
Well, yeah, that's, that's essentially the same thing.
Yeah.
It is, and it, it is.
If you look at it, it'd be, certainly be unique. Impact fees typically result from...
For new development.
Burdens that are uniquely attributable to a new development.
Schools, parks, districts.
Schools, parks, libraries, those kinds of things.
So that's where I'm going from, because it is an impact, because we're retail. And if it did, you're, I mean, I don't know. The, I don't wanna refer it again as a pilot program, so.
Well, it's an impact to our revenue structure. We don't levy property tax. So the impact is a loss of revenue because of, of an asset that's no longer producing sales tax. But I think you had, there was something in here about marketability for the landlord that's more predictable because it allows them to kinda go after tenants knowing that they're not gonna have this upfront cost. And I think that's important because...
Yeah.
How, how long was that open Planet Fitness? 10 years?
10 years.
I mean, that's... I just fear as we start, as you project ahead economically.
Has that, this really been an issue, though? Have, have you heard from landlords saying, hey, I've got these potential tenants, but they don't wanna even, but they don't even wanna start looking because we hear about this pilot program that you may or may not?
It, it has come up. So all of the ones at the mall, it has been an issue where we've had to pause them in their lease process to get through the, the certificate. The Planet Fitness certainly was an issue. The, out of all of them, I can only think of one, since I've been here some of the last two years. I can only think of one where the, the pausing to go through the certificate wasn't an issue. So most of them, it has been an issue with the landlord.
But that's, that's sort of after the fact. Have we heard from landlords saying in terms of their marketing the space that they've brought up? Are, are they even aware of the potential pilot program? And have they heard from potential tenants saying, oh, I don't even wanna go down that road because I don't wanna be asked six months from now after we've put all this money into making plans that suddenly they're gonna ask for five years' worth of taxes?
Yeah, it was, it was somewhat of an issue for the, for Planet Fitness. It's a significant amount of space. It was a large space that they were leasing, and so it did, it did cause some issue for them to have to, to get through that and commit to that when they, they do have other locations they could have potentially gone to. So it has come up. So the, the predictability issue is certainly something that we've, we have seen.
Has the mall asked you about this?
We have talked to their leasing, their leasing team. And yes, we have, we have discussed with them how it is an issue for them to not be able to take a, an otherwise permitted use, I think was the, the one that was most concerning for them, that there was no special use requirement, but they had to go through the conversion certificate for.
But, so it's, it's still going to exist because the conversion certificate, unless we get rid of that, that, that's still gonna be an issue. It's, it's, but not the pilot aspect of it. But they haven't, even if we get rid of the pilot, they're still gonna have that same burden, saying, oh, we gotta pause and make sure that, that the board approves of the conversion.
Yeah, and the point from the memo on predictability was the program in general.
It was, right. It wasn't just the pilot aspect of it, it's the program in general. So my, my guess is they weren't even aware of the pilot aspect of it because we've never employed it. So, so it's not that, oh, the...
So basically what you're asking for is elimination of the pilot program? And to make this more of a staff, a staff-level approval type thing to make it easier to? Is that?
So what, what the staff memo is suggesting is that some level of change is necessary. So at minimum, addressing the, the lack of standards for the pilot. That was sort of the, the, the point of the staff memo, is that at minimum, this does need to be changed. If we're going to be changing the, the section, the question to the committee then is, is how far do you want to go with it? What, what other types of changes would you like to see? There was no specific staff recommendation beyond just addressing the, the, the conditional approval of the pilot.
And going forward, procedure would be staff would develop the changes, then it would have to go to a planning and zoning?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Discussion, recommendation to this committee, then ultimately to...
And then come back to the committee, the whole?
I mean, is that what it is right now? For the certificate building use conversion, what's the burden on the?
The, the burden, so the, two different things.
Burden on the landlord or is the burden on the?
The question here was, how does this amendment go through?
No, mine was procedure on changing the procedure.
The conversion certificate is purely committee, the whole, and then board. So when there's a, the only time that the planning and zoning ever gets involved is if the, the use also needs a special use approval. So what we've done with those, we've started the conversion certificate discussion with the committee, made sure that the committee is okay with it, then had the zoning entitlement catch up with it. But yes, the, the procedure for the amendment, you know, given, if we have specific direction leaving tonight, we could set it up and do the public hearing. If there's a direction to come back to the committee and sort of draft it out, we could do that as well. There's nothing that says it has to go, the next stop doesn't have to be planning and zoning. But planning and zoning does have to hold a public hearing to amend this.
So what's the pleasure of the board going forward?
I think a first decision point could be, do we want to add standards to the pilot or remove the pilot? And then I think, what I'm hearing is definitely wanna keep a certificate. The board likes having at least some authority and control over the, the retail core area. But we, at minimum, need to make some amendment to either adding standards to the pilot or removing the pilot outright.
I, I don't have a problem with removing the pilot since we've really never used it. And, and it's the one part of it that could really get us into...
Right.
Problems over, you know, how we...
Unless, unless we can come up with...
Right.
Legitimate.
Right.
Standards. I just don't know if we can, I don't know if we can do that. It's nice to have it in our back pocket, potentially, as long as, as long as it can pass scrutiny. I just don't know.
It's a huge burden, the way it's written.
Yeah.
Five years of sales tax, not 100% each year, but...
Yeah.
100% the first year, 80, you know, going in that sliding scale. It's a lot of money. Planet Fitness would have had to pay, did you calculate that out?
No, that was actually one of the challenges we ran into, as, as the manager had mentioned. The resource for calculating it disappeared, so we were gonna have to replace it with another, another source. But we didn't get to that point of actually calculating it out.
It, it's really a huge, it's a huge obstacle, the way it's written right now.
It's a burden, it's a burden on the, on the retailers, absolutely no doubt. I mean, because you also have, depending on the landlord, okay, five years, they have this burden. And then after five years, they might have rent pass-through that they gotta deal with. Right? On their lease. So it's, and on top of, usually non-retail probably tend to have higher insurance, depending on the use, of course, you know? So my opinion is, as I said before, eliminate the pilot. We can always come up with a new ordinance if we get into a situation where we start looking at that, this is what it's, the economic landscape's gonna look like, we have to protect ourselves. We just, and, and, but this is, this is archaic, it seems like.
Yeah, yeah, especially with the change in the landscape. I mean, we didn't, when this was written, we didn't, we didn't have Melody Farms. We didn't have a lot of the other...
But I want oversight, though, on this stuff.
Yes, I agree.
To your point.
I agree.
Okay. Question to Tom Lyons. Okay, now you've got Planet Fitness and, and, you know, 10 other, you know, Skyzone, Bears Fit, all of that. Okay, we, we're not making any revenue off of them. But, you know, realistically, what, what are the taxes to all the other taxing bodies? Are they good, bad, or worse than they were, you know, when they were empty? So let's go to Planet Fitness. 10 years empty, what are they paying in, in real estate tax, all the, all the school districts and other taxing bodies? So now that Planet Fitness is in there, it's not gonna change dramatically, right? Or is it? I doubt it.
Are you talking property tax or just sales tax for that whole center?
I can't hear you, Tom.
I, I'm sorry, are you talking about property tax on Planet Fitness?
Yeah, yeah, that's all, I mean, what it's, that's all that's coming out of there. So is it changed from when it was vac, when it was vacant for 10 years to now? In other words, I mean, is the assessor gonna whack them because now they got a tenant? Or are they just paying, they're gonna pay the same thing to schools, parks, all that stuff?
Well, doesn't the, doesn't a retail space like that basically pay almost as if it's an empty building anyway in terms of property tax?
I don't know exactly on that. I, I would assume whoever's owning the building is paying the property tax. A lot of those retailers will lease. So whether it's vacant or not, there's still a tax on it.
Yeah, it's still a square foot in it, yeah.
I, I don't know how they migrate around, how the assessors migrate around a decade-long vacant position as far as evaluation.
There should be a lower, a much lower assessment with a vacant building than with a building with a tenant.
Yeah.
So I, I would say the property tax has definitely increased since Planet Fitness.
So why don't we slip that out?
Well, yeah, if we...
And if that makes sense, okay, we let these other uses come in. It's just better for other taxing bodies.
Because that, my guru at, at the school, Jess Porras, years ago, said that retail was generally the lowest thing the school got taxes from.
Vacant much lower than occupied retail.
I don't remember him splitting that. That's why he always wanted hotels.
Hotels, I mean, that brings up other alternative revenue sources as well. We can make the conversation longer, but...
Hey, Mayor, I'm, I'm looking at...
We should build some hotels.
I'm, just for the reference, I'm looking online at the parcel for Marketplace, which is where Planet Fitness moved, so that, that entire shopping center. It looks like, starting in 2016, the, the tax bill is going down.
Okay.
The tax is paid on the property is going down. So it, I think mirrors what village attorney Furlow said.
Well, I think that's part of that, isn't that because of the whole mall overall thing going down too, or?
I, I, I think the vacancies...
Yeah.
Have helped the property owner be able to lower their assessed value.
And the taxes anyways reduce it.
Because it's based on income generated now.
All right, so where do we wanna go with this for the rest of the night?
Well, do we wanna have...
So I, I think part two, having, it sounds like I'm hearing general consensus to keep the certificate program. I've heard more in favor of eliminating the pilot. I guess the next part of this would be, you know, we can, we can draft an amendment and bring it back to the committee to get a right track, wrong track before we set up a public hearing with planning and zoning. So if that's, if that is the, the desire of the committee, we could do that. With that, we could, if there's anything in particular with the committee... particular that the committee would like to add to this, we could certainly do that as well. But, um, I, I think a, a good, uh, next step for this would be to, uh, prepare something in writing that shows the committee how this would look so far.
Okay, and I got a question for, for Mr. Ferro.
Yes, Mayor.
You there, Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. We can still, if, if things got totally out of control, where we, we got all these non, basically retail uses coming into town, can we still do a moratorium?
Moratorium would have to be, go through a public hearing. Answer's yes. You, you'd have to make some specific findings and go through a public hearing, but you can do one, it can't last forever. Uh, there, there has to be a reason, reason for a moratorium. In other words, to study something, um, that you're, you're going to consider, but the answer generally is yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, you know, I guess we should just move on from, from, for now, and I guess as they come, handle them the way we have. We can always say no, too, if we, if we really, really don't think the use is something we want. That's our discretion.
That's right.
Yes, you, you can say no within the standards of the certificate of building use conversion.
Yeah.
So, we tighten up the standards.
Not just something we don't want, it's gotta-
Well, it's gotta fit.
It's gotta, it's gotta violate these standards in some ways, not-
The, the first one, conversion will not have a detrimental impact on the fiscal health of the village.
And that could just be surrounding property-
That's pretty broad.
Yeah, but that could, yeah, exactly. I mean, that could be like, we think your business is going to reduce the property, surrounding property values.
Well, and we'll tighten things up, but that is a, something to build on, and that's, uh, I mean, we haven't said no to any of these-
Right.
-recently, or ever, perhaps, but that doesn't stop you from making a, a well-grounded finding on a particular use coming forward. Um, so, you, as the mayor stated, you, you do have some ability to reject a, a user under these standards.
Why, why is the pilot program such a greater potential risk in terms of judicial review than just the conversion standards themselves?
Well, in, in my opinion, there, there's just no standards to apply it. There's no standard-
There's no real standard for the conversion. It's basically, or, or gut feeling, yeah, but they're, I mean, they're so broad that, that we can say any of them apply. We can say, "Oh, well, we don't believe that it's gonna not have a detrimental impact."
I don't know that they're any more broad than standards for a variation, uh, or something, even a special use.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You're absolutely right. It's a variation, so.
It's, they're, they're pretty similar to that.
Yeah, the first standard on, on a variation is reasonable, reasonable return on investment, yeah.
I mean, they're pretty, they're pretty close to that.
But, so, suppose we, we did employ the pilot program at the outset, do you think we would've been in trouble with the first one, Bears Fit, or whichever it was, with saying that, you know, you're removing space from the retail zone and, and putting in non-retail, we want to get money?
Well-
Do you think, you know, initially, we would've been a problem? I understand now, after we've gone through six of them, or whatever, and haven't used it, the seventh one might say, "Hey, you know, it's a problem."
But my, my thought on getting rid of the pilot is more what Trustee Shank was saying, and that is that it would, it, it make it easier for somebody marketing the property if they didn't have that hanging out there.
We're being questioned now, so I, that's the thing. We're being questioned now with the pilot program. Eliminate the pilot program, and you may see an increase of-
No, but, but, but to my earlier point, I don't think it ever even came up. I don't think it was a pro, an impediment to marketing, 'cause I, my bet is, they didn't even discuss it. I, the, the conversion process, they discussed.
Yeah, you see what you're saying.
But not the pilot program.
Yeah.
So, so I don't, I don't know if that truly was an impediment that we're removing, because we never employed it. I don't think, I'm betting that the mall didn't even know about it.
If we employ, let's say we went back in time, and hypothetically, we employed it on each one of the applicants, you gotta take into account that there could be a possibility that of the seven, only two would come in, and the other four would seek elsewhere, or five would seek elsewhere, because that's, that's the, the damage that could've been done to, we, we could still have open box stores, right? Because they're not gonna foot five years.
I'm not saying we, I'm not saying we should've, I'm just saying-
I know.
-from the aspect of, at, at this point, in retrospect, it's arbitrary, perhaps, and it's a financial loss, more so for those businesses. But equally so, the conversion process in and of itself is very arbitrary, and we could also be challenged in, in court, potentially, about that, and, and the businesses might say, "I don't wanna waste my time if it's, if it's gonna be a long process that the board has to decide and go through committee, the whole, everything else." So, there's, there's, there's certain aspects of arbitrariness to both of these. It's just the pilot program is much steeper issue in terms of a significant financial impact.
Yeah.
That's the main difference, I see. But I just don't know if, like, could we change the pilot program so it's not as draconian in terms of the amount, and just, still, I mean, would, would it even be worth our while to do that just to, just to recoup some of the revenue to pay for, you know, police and things like that, you know?
I don't know.
And not make it five years' worth of taxes, but to have something similar to an impact fee, but still within the confines of the pilot program as previously employed.
That's kind of like, you know, have something just completely different than the pilot program. Like, so pilot program is gone, we create something completely different, and it could be an impact fee-type structure, that what happens when you move into a non, retail into a non-retail, that requires a certificate building use conversion. I think that's a cleaner, better-
I, I don't know if that's even allowed.
But you would still have, I, why, you would, what ordinance you would make.
And we can look at it. It's-
I, I think-
We're, we're traveling down, uh-
Slippery slope.
A path that-
There's no, there's no doubt.
Others haven't traveled down, so-
Yeah, there's no doubt.
It would take a lot of research to-
But, at the end of the day, there's always the options of additional, you know, like amusement tax, you know?
That's right.
Type of, different types of taxes, kinda thing. Also, in lieu of this, that will recoup that lost revenue and keep the storefronts filled.
From what I'm hearing from all of us, I think, uh, we're pushing to the point, get rid of the pilot, and figure something a little stronger in how we word it for the rest. So, I, I-
I agree.
That's where I'm, that's where I would honestly lean. I, you look at things, uh, eliminate the, uh, the pilot, and Andrew, you said, some people have questioned it. You know, you step back a little bit, and you take a look at, uh, the fitness store going in, well, they're coming out, and they're gonna go to our store, or go to our restaurants, and that means there's more people in this village, and they're going to all the restaurants. So, that is a point of helping us for revenue. So, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm, uh, personally, for me, I pull the pilot program and make a little stronger, uh, hit on how we do it. How to word it, I don't know.
I agree on that, and see how, where we, where it takes us.
Yeah.
I agree.
Doctor, what do you think, too?
Yeah.
I'm trying to-
It's a fresh start.
Yeah, it's a fresh start. I just don't know if we can, if, I don't know if there ever would be a need to tax an individual business in the way that this was-
It's like a punishment.
Suggested. So, it, it, and at this point, I don't know if we could ever do that.
Well, and, and, to that point, that's one of the things I was talking about, that when this was written in 2010, that was more of an important thing than now, because of all of the additional retail that's been built in the last seven, eight years.
Yeah, historical context-
As opposed to fourteen years ago.
Historical context is pretty important in why this was invented.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, at that time, there wasn't even an inkling of, of Melody Farms or anything like that, so-
So, well-
Yeah, we were strictly looking at the mall, you know?
Well, no, there, I mean, there were certainly other shopping areas there. I'm, I'm just curious-
Not like we've got now, though.
Certainly, yeah. I mean, Melody Farm wasn't there, and, and even when this came into play, I don't think the, the Vernon Town Center was in, I don't remember what year, but, so, what, I don't remember, you were on the board. I mean, do you remember why, why you agreed to it in the first place, in terms of thinking that there were suddenly gonna be all these conversions from retail to non-
Again, just because we looked at, basically, the mall and, and the marketplace as the, the two, you know, Rivetown and it was-
We were a retail-
Yeah.
Our, our basement was not a big and-
They're coming out of the recession.
Strong as it is now.
They're coming out of the recession. She had a zoning consultant that recommended it, and you guys jumped on board with it.
Did you, did you foresee at the time that there were suddenly gonna be Planet Fitness and, and five other places like it that wanted to take over-
Never even thought of it.
-the, the space? I mean, there must've been some reason why you guys agreed to it in the first place.
I think because we were, we don't have a property tax, and we were strong on our , uh, sales tax.
Yeah, and I, I, I think you just had the inkling that mixed use was coming, but nobody really had an idea what it looked like.
Yeah.
Right. Might have to go into the Jedi archives to find the, uh-
Yeah.
But-
Let me know if sales tax matters.
Uh, you got it.
Okay. Does that give you enough direction?
Yeah, sure. I'm, I think, I think it would be productive to, to, um, draft something, uh, and, and come back to the committee and show you, um, what we're working on, and, and like I said, uh, at that point, get a right track, wrong track, read of that draft amendment, uh, and then go from there on to the public hearing with planning and zoning.
And, uh, that's a good idea, eh, uh, do it, Andrew. And, uh, you know, fortunately, we're okay. You know, I mean, and this is, you know, a bump in the road. I mean, probably all the towns are going through the same machinations we are with amusements, you know? I don't know, you know, I mean, is there a va, is there a valid tax? Is, is amusement that can stretch any of these companies, these uses? I don't know, but we do have an amusement tax.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, but maybe it doesn't. Maybe it is a real stretch. Other than that, uh, hey, is anybody interested in, in the not-too-distant future, doing a re, a new strategic plan? 'Cause I talked to a couple of people on staff, and I know this isn't on the agenda, but, you know, we, last time we did it was 2012.
What kind of plan?
I, I miss what, we're-
Strategic plan. We haven't done one for-
What kind of plan?
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan.
That's something we could look at.
We haven't done in a long time.
That's something we could look at.
I think that's something, so.
And that would address, you know, the things like Andrew's bringing up here, which is a good thing.
Yes, it is. He's worked hard on it.
So, everybody could talk amongst themselves, but I think that might be a good idea.
Well, be something to bring up at a future committee, the whole.
Sure.
All right.
So, should-
So, thank you, Andrew, for-
Well, should, should removal of the pilot program be part of the strategic plan, then? Like, say, helping us decide at what point we would need to-
No, that would, that would be delaying it, I think, too much, no?
I mean, we're, we're delaying something that's never been used, so it's-
I know.
So, it's not like it really matters that much.
I think this could be, this could be-
And once again, I, I-
I think we're just gonna-
I understand you wanna clean things up, but it's, we're, we're cleaning up something that, that my guess is never come up.
Then that's why we should remove it.
Well, we'll see what they come back with and go from there, and-
We'll bring the amendment, and we can, you can decide.
Yeah.
You can decide that.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Well, hang on, uh, we, do we have-
No closed session.
No closed session, okay. Then feel free, sir.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Good night, Mr. Adjourn.
Thank you, and good night.
Tom, I got your, I'll, I'll get back to you. Let me check.